Eric is in the room.
That would preclude him from being here.
Yeah, I said it was only a couple hour drive, but he didn't respond back.
Wasn't enough motivation for him?
But he's leaving at twelve.
Yeah, that's it.
So we don't see him again?
We will not be seeing him again. We will.
So can we reverse for envelopes that I bought for an LCDC?
Yep, just give Dina the receipt.
Um, so, I should, I should be asking, can I for count? Anybody have any good stories?
Tim was telling that Ford up at his house.
Today?
We had rain out for a little bit, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, it was a little surprising. Right on, we were rolling down.
Good thing it didn't rain in our house.
I didn't get any rain here in the pond.
And there was just a brief, just little sprinkle that you could just see on the pond. That's, that's it.
No, ours was, ours was, uh, was loud enough that I heard it from my room. So, and I said, uh-oh, my windows are open to my car, so I had to move my cane. I had to scoot out there, close the windows of my car, you know, don't like having, you know. This afternoon about four o'clock.
It's raining right now.
Rain, rain for like ten minutes.
We had, did it hit them? Here then, did it here?
It did not, it was raining.
Did not, or did?
Did not, but it was raining in Hanover, but only on a flat stretch near the farm, not downtown.
Yeah, it's been a small town.
Pre-localized stores.
Wow, that, that was a good story, thank you, thank you. That was a good one.
Yeah.
Any others? Somebody just pulled up here.
Cattle, cattle, cattle. Cooper's better.
Oh, the bear, who's the bear?
Yeah, we had our feeder destroyed last night.
So far.
So, uh, yeah.
Yeah, it's outside. We have a two-year-old that's there after almost three weeks, because every day.
Oh, yeah.
Things are bad, and he's lonely, things are, he's a good, he's a good guy.
Our neighbors say they saw last week.
No, well, he, he licks up the bird seed that's left over.
Kevin!
Oh, we took our bird seed, it's been being late.
Welcome to the Thunderdome.
Which is funny, because I would've thought they would've done that.
Put you in the applicant's seat. Being late, there's no applicant's seat.
All right, all right, kids, story time is over. We're calling the meeting to order, I would like order in the room. Um, so, let's, um, do whatever we need to do to continue. So, we'll open up the hearing.
Yep.
I'd like to open up the hearing, and I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing.
To August eighth at seven PM.
Thank you. Do I have a s- oh, wait, wait, second. Um, all those in favor? And all those opposed?
So I have a question.
You won't be here, okay?
Okay.
So I have a question, if, if in fact, these people buy the property, then we don't have to agree?
That's up to, that's up to the application. Yeah, but they'll, they'll notify us.
They can withdraw the application.
Similarly, what if I want to be asked about these?
Correct. Okay, and minutes? Um, anybody have minute issues?
Rich had two that I've, I missed a, on page two, um, third paragraph, uh, the board asked, just as a planning and zoning, should've been administrator. And then the acceptance of the minutes, um, I had the wrong date.
Okay, good, well done. Anybody, and, and here comes some more.
Well, I just had sort of a question. On page one, under item one, it's third paragraph, um, I just wondered whether we should add, they don't have enough road frontage either, is that correct? Well, that's a lot, if not road frontage.
The day got in a variance, I mean.
Right, we're listing, we're listing all the, he noted that the house lot was non-conforming as to area, and one of the bill appointments were in the primary line center. I just wonder whether we should add that there wasn't enough road frontage. I mean, it's still a.
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
To be consistent.
Yeah, just to list them all.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. Okay, uh, is that it?
That's it.
All right, so, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, adopt the minutes as amended by Rich and Tim. Do I have a second? Uh, all those in favor? All right.
Who's second?
Me.
Me, me is second. All right, and now, uh, the goal is to finish this build-out tonight. So why don't we jump right into it?
We're gonna go not do the zoning amendments?
Well, as I recall, the, the notion, and it may have been used, that he didn't want to do any zoning amendments until we finish this.
I just put it in there as, you know, kind of a reminder for people to, because you wanted people to continue to think about them, so I did.
All right, and, and it worked, because you are thinking about them. All right, it's well done.
Yeah, we sure, we're close to finishing.
We are close, we, we should, I mean, we got the formula, and let's just do it.
I know you had questions, Rich, and these questions for the board, not something that I'm gonna take the time to write up.
Okay.
Right now, it's just kind of too hectic to write it up for one member.
Oh, are you writing that?
So, the question that I asked David is, um, two questions each. David came through some, I think, automatic process to come up with a rating that's, you know, which we're examining the three above. And, so I, I asked if that's something that he can describe some way, um, so that we can, you know, I think if, if any of this report comes out, we need to be able to say, how did we rate?
Well, it definitely is, at the, you know, any final report, that'll all be written up. I just, it's something I don't have at the moment, um, you know, we are, right now, in my busy season.
Sure.
And writing that up right now is just not going to be high on my priority.
What we can say is, is that when this is complete, there'll be a process summary. That's what you were asking me?
Actually, the second question then was, how do we take these other factors and weight them to determine the number of units? Because I was, I worked hard to try to figure out what was happening, and ask me, I think, pretty quite the finer pattern.
Well, this is what we're, the pattern is what we've been doing, that is how we're gonna come up with a number.
I was unable to come up with a way to explain it, and, you know, maybe that's just me being not.
So it was a scoping exercise, it was based on the, um, dimensions of the lot, and the building size, and how much.
Gallons per day.
And then it was based on the septic, and those were the criteria that were.
Well, the criteria are listed at the top.
That were primarily used to come up with factors. And so the high-weighted ones were the ones that had the most opportunity, and so those were the ones we decided to focus on. And the very, very low ones, we decided to wear a few little hanging fruit, and so you ignore, or disregard. And that's how we decided to call and move on. I, I mean, it, it really was, it's a scoping exercise, and so it's not meant to be to a finite, to get to this degree. It's to be, get the eighty-twenty rule of what the line called being built out as, and those are the criteria.
And then you guys were, in going through, I, I mean, I was all in the same boat as Rich, because I had missed the previous meeting. I'm not as familiar with some of the, the mental processes you guys are running through, when you're saying, oh, this is a, um, you know.
Right, conversion with five.
Right, right, so, if, if you could maybe walk us through that just a little bit while we do the next one or two, that would be, Rich and I might be a little. I, I was just figuring I would absorb it eventually.
We'll, we'll do that.
Like you, I didn't really.
What I'd, what I'd like to do is really make sure we get through this tonight.
Yep.
And, um.
But maybe to answer the question, you know, David can just address the question.
Well, I mean, you know, some, some of what I picked up was, you know, uh, two oh forty-six, it's only got.
Which one?
Uh, two oh one forty-six, it's only got four hundred and fifteen gallons per day.
Yeah, so right, right there, you're down to one.
Right, and so, and, and so that's, um.
That's weak, eliminated.
That's a knockout. There were other things that people said, that I wasn't quite sure.
Can you remember what the things were that, that said that you weren't quite sure?
All of them. Yeah, I hope somebody else is taking good notes. No, really, uh.
Well, like the one, like the one above it.
What's, but I think Kevin's point is, well, we'll take him, that maybe we should just start, uh, with the next one.
All right, let's, let's move this one.
Explain to us a little bit, us morons, a little more what your thought process is.
Two oh one eighty-four, let's go. All right, so, so we're starting with a gallons per day, so maximum at, what is our criteria, three hundred is. So, so you could theoretically, on that basis alone, you could get six. But now we go, now we try to.
So John, let me, I just want to be really explicit here, so three hundred gallons per day per bedroom, per unit?
Per unit.
Per unit.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Two oh one here, eighty-four.
Let's wait till everybody's. Sorry.
Nope, nothing there, next one over. Okay. So I'm just pulling up invisions, like I did the last year.
Right.
So we can reference.
Eight to ten.
So it's important to just, like, the number of units that are already there.
Right.
This doesn't show that.
But you, but Kevin can.
Kevin's checking that.
Okay. Two oh one eighty-four is Rusty's lot right over here, one house already on it, fairly open.
Well, it doesn't just have a lot of wet area there?
That is, um, what they were very surprised when they tried to do some test calls, they, they found that the, the water table is very high, um, or shows to be very high. Um, there's, from my understanding, that even if you don't have water, that there's, you can look in the soil, and you can see where the water table. Those are high, even though the water itself is fairly, doesn't show, um, but because they're there, he is having trouble getting DES to approve, um, a larger septic system. He would love to put, uh, several thousand square foot, uh, single four houses there, basically, um. So.
He can't, anyway, two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the septic right now has been the problem.
So.
So that gallons per day is really not a.
I, I think, yeah, I don't think it reflects.
So based on what you know, and, and doing it conservatively, what can we assume of that?
Um, I think you could absolutely at least get one more, um, unit.
Okay. By conversion, or by?
No, by.
By addition.
By addition, um, I don't think you would get, um, I, I think the septic is going to be an issue there for anything.
So we want to be conservative, so, let's say just plus one.
It's really too small for a conversion.
And so what, what's there now is one?
There's a single family residence there, a small one, um, with a septic system that doesn't work really well.
Okay, so, plus one, all right.
So, so the notation that I, it's a plus one unit.
Plus one by addition, not conversion.
By addition, not by conversion.
Okay.
So, what I've been using is a plus one means by addition, plus one with a C is by conversion. Okay?
Plus one beyond what's already there.
Right. Would be a total of two on.
So before we go any further, are you guys okay? Is that, that one sounds.
Okay, yeah.
Makes sense to me.
Yep.
Okay.
And let's, well, actually, do we know that there's enough space, uh, at least got enough lot area and all the others to.
Right.
He's got sixteen thousand, he's got sixteen, that's about eight or a half.
So just quickly, so for when you say conversion versus addition, conversion would be taking a single family and making a two-family, for example?
Be adding the unit within the building.
Within the building, and addition would be to add another house, or to add on another.
Different structure.
Build on, or build on an apartment, or something like that.
No, apartment would be a.
That would be.
That would be a conversion.
It would be.
An in-law apartment, or something like that would be.
Right.
Or it could be an ADU, um, internal accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah.
But this, on this property, we're talking about it in separate structure.
Okay.
By conversion, we have the six.
So let me, let me just keep asking the naive questions here to go through, so, uh, a detached AD, would a detached ADU be all over here?
Yeah, it would be separate, it would be considered a separate unit.
And, and so, that's really what we're talking about?
Well, I think that lot could be.
It could be.
Or subdivided.
Could be a thousands where feet, as opposed to seven hundred and fifty.
So if there was a subdivision, it could.
It's got another house or.
Frontage to subdivide.
But, I mean, for, for our purposes, it doesn't matter, you can get an additional unit.
I'm, I'm just sort of, on that particular parcel.
Yeah.
We're not getting that specific.
Yeah, we're not, we're not.
We know that there's there's a building.
We're not differentiating between.
Okay, that was Kevin's point last time, is, is we don't want to make it sound like we're designing something, or pre-approving a strategy.
Because we're not.
We're simply saying, is it in the realm of possibility? And if it's in the realm of possibility, whether it's an in-law apartment, or a subdivision, or whatever, we don't want to, we don't want to pretend that we even.
Exactly. All right, two oh one, one twenty-eight, street one.
Okay, that's just up the street, that's, if you know where Katie Jay's house is, it's a lot behind, it's vacant right now. It has, um, I'm gonna say just one, because there's a lot of fill in there. Uh, there used to be a sand pit in there, and, um, all the front part of it's been filled.
So I, I, so this one says point one, is, and so I'm just wondering, you know, this is two oh one, one twenty-eight, point one, and I'm seeing point two, where is point one?
Oh, I'm sorry, I looked at the wrong, point one would be the, the front lot, which is Katie's, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, it says, I'm sorry.
So she, she.
Oh, the, the green one, the light green one, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I looked at the wrong one.
Okay. So what, what is this?
Uh, that.
So she's not fill also?
Um, she's not on fill, but the, the, uh, right behind the house drops off into that sand pit.
Yep.
And there's really no place to do anything else. Um, there's a small stream that runs through the, the back there, um, not always running, but it does run most of the year, so I think that it's probably, um, where, that there's no potential there.
Could she do an ADU?
She could definitely, she's got like all the, you know, childcare facility in there, and the basement is all.
Can we count that as a plus one?
I would say plus one.
Okay.
It looks like she's got septic.
So.
So.
Plus one.
So this is plus one because there's plenty of septic, uh.
It's a big house, big enough house that you could divide it up, maybe by floors there, is it a walkout?
Okay.
A nineteen hundreds birthday?
Eighteen hundreds.
Eighteen hundreds.
Eighteen eighty-one. I round, I round up.
Anyway, it doesn't matter, there's enough room for.
Well, I just want to make sure, I know where the numbers come from, I, uh, the lot coverage is seventeen ninety-nine, am I looking at the right one?
It's what the current lot coverage is, maximum is six thousand.
Yeah. So, I see, so there's plenty of available lot coverage.
Right, yep.
And are you considering that this could be subdivided?
No.
No. So just putting this, David's, David's knowledge of the property, it's such that, that doesn't seem likely. And it's, that's about as far as we're taking it.
Okay.
I mean, maybe, maybe, maybe it is possible, but we're just not.
Yep.
We're going on the conservative side.
If we want, we overestimate, there's probably one that we're underestimating, so.
David, is Katie on the back, does she have one twenty-eight, one two oh something?
Yes, looks like it.
Okay, two oh one sixty-one.
So, just on the East Bedford Road, you have the big orange one, it's just to the east of that. Yep. Going to be the, the big farmhouse that has that nice open room in the barn? That one, I think, um, when you look at that, there's plenty of, uh, ton of septic, but the, uh, definitely can have space to do the conversion with the house, especially with the barn.
So, um, we're looking at five, under the best circumstances, just based on the gallons per day, five.
Yep.
And, and is that too much to assume?
No, I don't think so, when you look at the, the house and.
So we, we could do plus four with a C?
Yep.
So that would, here including the barn for the conversion?
Oh, absolutely.
As long as it has.
Well, the, the barn is attached to the house, and the house has, um, you know, septic and, and power, so.
So if the barn's attached, even though it doesn't have septic, right?
But I, I consider it all one structure.
Really?
I didn't know that.
Uh, it's.
Me?
Yeah. Yeah, to me, it's, you know, you know, you don't have, uh, septic in your bedrooms, but it's all part of the, you know, so, just because the septic isn't extended into that part of the house.
Okay, so is everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
For the purpose of this exercise anymore? Okay, two oh one twenty-one.
That's Gary Brashers on Market Street.
Okay.
He's got more than one unit, I don't know how many are there, though.
He's got more than you, one unit now?
Yes.
Yeah.
It says I could have seen one.
Well, he's got, um, oh, well, okay, fine.
Well, let's go with what is official.
There's an outfield in there that I thought was an apartment. So what has he got, he's got a, something.
He's got a garage.
He's got an attached garage, plus that other building.
That's a detached garage, I don't think, there's a volume in there, I mean, I've been.
Yeah.
Getting that, that's like, ready guys trailer, right underneath.
So what is, what do people think?
I think his garage, we didn't cover it, he's got plenty of gallons per day.
So what do you think we, we can get there?
I think his house is kind of large, too, how big's his house?
Eighteen, two.
I would say plus two there, minus that, with twenty of land and for septic.
And is that plus two conversion, or plus two?
Yeah, I would do conversion, yep.
Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, um, two oh one eighty-three. Where would these, where bring them?
That's gonna be right across the street here, um, right across from ten, um, isn't that Brett Ryan's?
Yeah.
Um, the, um, tar building.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Wow, wow. I mean, by conversion, I suppose. Right, is that a maximum? I mean, could we get six in there?
I think you could get six in there without a problem.
Oh, you have to.
You could put fifteen.
You could buy it.
Twenty-six hundred, twenty-six hundred, twenty-five then four, twenty-six hundred square feet.
For the bill, the tar bill?
Oh, it's bigger.
No.
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand.
Whoa.
It's, it's an airplane now, you're.
Sorry, yeah.
Uh, okay, so we'll say plus five conversion?
Well, couldn't they do a subdivision also?
I don't know.
It's currently a, uh, tapo.
Not that I know of, I don't believe.
I don't think so.
No, I don't.
All right, so.
They wouldn't have frontage there.
It's four point two acres.
But I've got eight hundred and fif- eight hundred and thirteen.
Yeah, so they could probably do, I mean, you got, the, the building kind of smack dab in the middle of everything.
I know.
Um, so you'd have to do a weird lot to, uh.
So, what if, what if you did, took a slice out of the building, because I think, and, because that'd be too close to lot one now?
I mean, that's, we've, we've talked about that, that property, and, and under certain, certain, you know, that's kind of tremendous amount of potential. For this exercise, I, you know, we could just say five.
Yep, plus five.
But, but in terms of forward thinking, that's certainly.
I mean, I get my conversations with him now, there's, um, one of the biggest problems that, uh, we see with, uh, businesses coming into line is that, um, a lot of the space is very old, um, kind of dingy. And as he's been modernizing some of it, he's finding that people are very happy to move into line with nicer office space. He found that with, uh, what he did at Maxfield, so he's finding it here, that as he updates this, people are swarming to come in. So I don't think that's gonna change.
Use.
Use, I think that's going to stay commercial, because now that they, you know, he can put some money into it and update it, and make it look nice.
So you're thinking a lot of office space?
I'm thinking that it's gonna stay as office and, and.
Nicer.
Nicer office space.
So how many offices, like you put in? Five, six offices?
Don't know what the, what it was, that was originally, whatever it was originally approved for.
Counting an office as a unit?
No, 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 so we're not, we're not, we're, we're just doing residential stuff, so for our purposes, this is a plus lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, uh, two oh one seven.
That's on the intersection of High Street and, um, Chester Road.
Is that, uh, Heisman?
No, no, it's.
It's gray, isn't it?
Both grays living there, um, what's her name? Bill Gray and Dick Gray's niece. That one, you know, when you look at the fact that there's a field out back that they grow corn in, Caleb does his corn in. Septic is fairly high. Yeah, I mean, four hundred feet of road frontage. You could definitely do a, um, and the house there, I think you could do a plus one in conversion, and then add another house to the lot, and still not.
It's a bad, bad driveway access there, very dangerous, people going fast.
Yeah.
Both ways, so, yeah.
What would you say?
I would say that you could subdivide, and, and put conversion in the house.
So one by conversion and one by addition?
If you subdivide with that much, the gallons per, and could, could be a new place?
Yeah, I think you could definitely do, so you'd want to do plus two?
Sure.
Plus two and one by conversion?
Yep.
I'm just thinking a plenty different way out of there, though, or, I don't know, two oh one six, we could go to the intersection.
Or, so, is everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay, uh, two oh one, that was two oh one seven. Two oh one seventy-nine point one.
Back, feeling all the way back there.
Is that behind Volts?
It is huge, but.
It's really wet.
It's real wet, I think, when you look at the, you know, there's a red line that drops right through, that's the, the one common district. And so I think the majority of it is, um, really too wet back there. You know, the septic is high, but I think that's because of the area, but not because of the.
Right.
The soil is, if you looked at areas that had better soils for septic, the number would be even higher.
So you think you get one, is there an existing house on there, because there's the house behind?
I think there is one.
There's the old gate.
Right.
Is.
There are those sun, but.
Is there two houses?
Already on here? I don't, I still don't know where the original, yeah, Charlie Volts' house is, and then there's one behind it.
You got that, Kevin?
I do, just asking a question.
Oh, how, how many units on there?
So they're listed separately, so one unit in each.
So they're on two different lots, or there're two houses on one lot?
One's twenty, twenty-one, plus the other's twenty-three.
So, yeah, that, that's, we've had these, when we did the inventory, that they stubble two on.
So could these, those be subdivided off and put one other lot by subdivision?
I think you could definitely get one other lot by subdivision, and.
Okay, well, let's put that down.
Right, so plus one.
And again, as you look, you know, it'll drop off from the road, um, you know, the, the vaults is where they have their garden, and then you have their wood pile, and then it kind of drops off. Once you get not too far out, you can tell it gets wet pretty fast.
Yeah, no, it definitely is.
So, I think you can get close. So, I think you can get close to the road, but you're not gonna get-
So in terms of the septic, if you put in, you know, you put in an adi- you know, an additional, but an additional, uh, unit, and we have two existing units, could those get anything by conversion or would that challenge yourself?
Charlie's house definitely.
Charlie's house definitely the other one, I don't think so.
So, plus one, plus one by conver-?
Come on.
It's twenty-two hundred square feet, the, the old farmhouse up front.
I, to be honest, I, yeah, I think septic's gonna be, you know, limiting, like I said, the number's fairly high, but it's just because of the area of the lot.
So put one for conversion, one for a subdivision?
Is that, do you think that's reasonable?
I think that's reasonable.
Alright, um, two oh one one oh two point one.
Let's see, I got your entry, cause I always get screwed up. I don't, so when I do, I just do that and I see two things. Alright, excellent. So that's, that's-
I love a cheat.
Yeah, so, so that's basically the vet's office and the, uh, house that's stored.
Oh, okay.
So forty-eight High Street, um, and fifty.
Right, so-
Fifty, fifty is the house.
What we got for septic, uh, so we could really only get two, so, and we have to. Does that sound right? So that would be no, no additional?
I'll say in there.
Are we talking about the, the house or the, or the?
I think the vet's office is probably big enough, you know, to convert to two.
Even with the, we got gallons per day at eight thirty-two?
Well, now, um, the, the two oh one, um, the point one, that's, that should be the vet's office, right? And then if you go to, uh, two oh point two-
So we're just looking at the vet's office?
Yes.
I think that's, yeah, cause-
Well, actually, we're looking, we should be looking at a four, which is the bright green, the bright green, so, two oh one point two label should be actually one, two oh one point one.
Well, I think, um, you have two oh one point one and two oh one point two, that they're, well, they're, but they're-
It's, it's one oh two point.
Sorry.
Yeah, one oh two, yeah. Um, one oh two point one would be the vet's office, and then one oh two point two is the house on the corner.
Okay, well, we just-
It's owned by his wife.
Right, so we're, we're just on the-
Right, the vet's office.
We're just at the clinic.
Um, I think that that, um-
We could certainly add one.
Okay, we do one through the conversion to the existing building.
Okay. Is that good with everybody?
Yeah, it's a little over two thousand square feet itself.
Yeah?
And will I consider mixed use in this analysis?
We're not, we haven't, we've just been strictly residential. Two oh one one twenty-nine.
That is going to be, um, basically right across, uh, right up from Katie Jane's place.
So it's Hannah Caldwell's old, um, Caldwell's old place, but somebody lives there now.
Atkins?
Yeah, right across from the highway, at the state highway garage. So you have a, um, I think their property goes right up to, um, I forget what the, the road, the private road that goes up there. Um, if you look back there, their property drops off from the road, goes down, there's a stream that runs down through there, and then it hits, goes up the hill, um, on the south side of that property, there's a huge hole that fills with water in the springtime, um, literally six, seven feet deep. So I think that, um, one conversion.
Houses that's-
The houses could, you could probably put, go back, now, they do have a fairly large backyard, um, so I think you could, you know, if you added to the house and went back, you could easily get one conversion out of it.
Okay, so we're saying one converted?
Yeah.
Um, four oh three fifty-three.
So that's that little top pad along, uh, East Stepford Road, lying right underneath the legend box. Yep.
Okay, so that's just a- So that's barely in there.
Barely in the district, yeah.
Yeah, that's barely-
There, there, there's not enough in there that, that would have missed for that.
So, yeah, we'll get an X there. Okay, two oh one one thirty-two, wow, twelve thousand five hundred and seventy-one. Golf course.
That's a fairly large lot, that's next one up from the one we talked about on the High Street.
Most of it's-
Does that go up the hill or do you see?
It does go up the hill. But, um, no.
Oh, wait, it's a nice, sorry.
It's a red, red, um, right, you need the house, you have to go up the, the private road. I've actually never driven up there myself.
Oh. Is that, is that, what, is that on High Street?
Yes.
Oh, I, I went up there by, by mistake one time. It's, it's, if, if this is what I'm thinking of, there's like this incredible security. You go way up this driveway and there's a, there's an fence and you have to press a button and then the dogs and machine guns come in. No, I mean, it's, there's a serious, if that's the one, I think it is.
A new house?
Yeah.
I always have to go for the house and come-
Well, no, it's not the new one, cause the new one's at, it's, uh, one thirty-four.
The one that's being built right-
Right, Willie's.
No, 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 it's not that one.
nineteen eighty-nine.
Yeah, this one, you, you'd have to go, there's a, a private road right across from the fire station. And you would access it going up that road and-
Yeah, I, that's the one I went up, yeah, mistake.
So there's, it splits and one goes to-
There are three up there.
To the former, um, Williamses. And then this one's off to the other side.
Okay, I don't know which one I went to, but one of them had incredible security. I, I, I didn't get that, this is my ghost. Alright, two oh one one thirty-two, what do we got?
The bathroom door in the bedroom was an outhouse door, then it would be Williamses.
No, I didn't see that.
Started out with no money, had, first house had an outhouse. Every house that they built, they took that outhouse door, they, they brought it with them and used it for their bathroom door.
Just to remind you.
Yeah, just to remind them.
So the one we're on is thirteen acres, means it's three thousand square feet.
Is that in the, no, that's not, that's not in, in-
Well, the drive probably is.
The drive is.
Yes, drive. I think you, the area in the, the district, um, you probably get one house, um,
Subdivided in the front for-
Oh, yeah.
So plus one?
I would say plus one, because, yeah, that front area, even though there's a steep hill back there, um, when you first look in there, it doesn't go up real steep. I think you could get something in there.
No, the bottom is not that steep.
Yeah.
Alright, so plus-
You could convert the house.
Well, it's outside of the district.
It's outside the district.
You could, but, no, it's outside of the district. Alright, two oh one sixteen. It's absurd, it's brown, it's broken.
Yep.
And her house is big enough to convert, and I think she's got enough land there to, uh, subdivide also.
Twen- twenty-three hundred square feet.
So-
So plus one, plus one C.
Wha- what's that?
Plus one and then plus one C, she's, she's got a barn that, it's a pretty good shape, I mean, that.
There is a, a, a stream that comes down through there.
No, give it back.
Yeah.
So, plus one and plus one conversion?
Yeah.
Okay. That was two oh one sixteen, alright, so we're at two oh one one thirty-four.
Um, that one I'm going to, so that's a new house that is, um, under construction and it would, should be pretty well close to being done, but that's outside of the district.
Okay.
Um, that front area is very steep, and I'm gonna say that there's nothing there.
Nothing there, that's, okay, two oh one fifty-four.
Church.
So how do we?
Lots of it.
It's a church?
Why is that even, you know?
I thought I had excluded that.
Is it the parsonage?
It comes up as the, um, church.
Oh, wait a minute, no, two hundred and fifty-four is a parsonage down off of, uh, uh, Union Street.
Yeah. Oh, Union.
Yeah, it's, if that, look down, the, on the southern part of the map, there's a large-
Do you wear any lips?
No.
No, no.
Big, sorry, maybe not.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's blue.
White house.
Still one.
Most of it's out of the district.
Most of it's out of the district, um-
I see, yes.
So-
That one, um, I've talked to them a couple of times about some subdivision and possible, but, um, again, you're, most of it's out of the district. Um, when you get back in there, um, that, that back portion is somewhat inaccessible and, uh, the stream that runs, or comes out from, uh, the backside or the north side of Line Common and behind the school, runs, date runs down through there, meets up with Grant Brook.
It's not sounding good.
I don't think it, there's, um, I think through conversion, uh, what's the house?
The house, it's got a lot, uh, twenty-seven- Twenty-seven sixty-four.
So,
plenty of order.
I think you could, uh, get maybe two out of conversion, um, I don't know, um, you know, when, when it hooks around, starts to the south, that first area, I don't know if that's, maybe do-
If we don't know, let's know soon. So you think it's-
There is no parsonage.
Well, that's, that's the issue.
Four twenty, no, I agree.
Right, but there, that's two pieces of frontage, apartments outside the district.
Oh, that includes both.
Yeah, that's, I don't have any way of-
So do you think they, they could get two by conversion? Or not?
You can get at least one.
Alright, let's go with a conservative. Is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, well. Well, they've got, the house is big enough for it to do.
Well, what do you-
Couldn't they do, why couldn't they do two in a conversion?
Well, are you saying two units total or two additional?
Two additional, so they have three in the house and a big enough for it. I mean, it would be almost, how many?
I mean, I don't see a reason why you couldn't add to it also, this, you know, with the, when you do the lot coverage numbers, it's gonna bump it up because it's a fairly large lot, so.
What's the sense of the board? Do you wanna go with one or two by con- I mean, I, I-
I think it's such a big lot, and it's, I, I'm not, I don't know much about, about addition based on what you guys have talked about, it's something, you might wanna overestimate on this one.
Yeah, I, I would have no issues with it too.
Okay, so, so two by conversion, okay. If there are no objections, I will go on to two oh one eighty-one.
So-
Yeah, that's going to be the, one of the big Stevenson's lot, where the, the big red, the former, um, tuckaway temperate, yeah, tuckaway.
That shows it's twelve thirty-eight frontage, but it looks like it only comes- Does that mean it's counting frontage on that side road?
It might be counting some of that frontage on the, I'd have to double check how it, um, because that road is-
Well, maybe Britton Lane is actually the, uh, the town road, cause that's where all the frontage would be.
Right, I don't know where, I'm trying to remember if I've ever seen Steve plowing it, that's the thing.
I don't, I don't, I'd have to go look and-
The way the program calculates road frontage, if Britton Lane is showing up as a road in the tax map, usually they don't show private roads, so I, you know, like, things like Horton Lane, they showed up, they show up as a right of way, not as a actual road. This showing up as an actual road, that may be incorrect in the tax map, but the program's gonna pick it up.
So what do we want to assume?
Um, I would-
The building's outside the district.
It's gotta be pretty close to being outside the district.
So, um, they, you would think they could subdivide. If they're on a private road, why couldn't they subdivide?
I don't see why they couldn't.
And along the road was, uh-
Could be considered a subdivision road.
Well, private roads can.
So-
So they could subdivide and get a, a house in the district.
Couldn't they get a house with an ADU?
I think so.
So, can we learn to say plus one or plus two?
I think plus two would be a reasonable.
Okay, two oh one twenty-two. Blanchhouse.
Oh, okay, so that's Blanchhouse. They've got a big backyard, most of their, but they actually have a lot of frontage too. When you walk down Big Rock, you could walk by there.
Is that with that slash line?
Yeah.
Is that a right of way for the-
That's a right of way for Big Rock.
Their house is big enough to, uh, to, uh, at least do one additional unit there.
Three thousand square, thirty-one hundred rooms.
Yep, yep.
So, um-
They've got, like, an attached garage, but that's probably a garage.
So what are, what are you giving them?
They're definitely one for conversion, possibly two. And they've got a lot of frontage, so they could have a second lot, but it would have to be down below, and it drops off.
Alright, so what, what's-
I'd say one by conversion and one, one for the subdivision.
And with the subdivisions, like the one before this, we said, we gave them two because they could have an internal ADU. Do we wanna do that as a-
Uh, there's septic.
There's septic, looks good.
Yeah. Yeah.
See, plus three.
So, what, yeah, but one by conversion and two- by subdivision. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, two oh one seventy-five.
That's, uh, Dowzin.
Alright, so-
Which by the way, if you noticed going by today, they are starting construction of their patio.
Okay. So what do, what do we would do with this, nothing?
Well, if you're residential, you definitely plus six.
Yeah, plus, yeah, five, well, six? There's no residential that are now.
There's no residential there now.
Or so are we counting that as a potential?
Well, if you, if it's sold, it's all wanted to split up. I mean, Brett's building, if you're counting that for, could happen with residential.
Yeah, that's, makes a lot more sense. But, I mean, if we're doing this strictly on possibility, so that would be plus five.
No, plus six.
Plus six, huh? Plus six by conversion?
Yeah.
Though, isn't that supposed to be a bed and breakfast? Or is it a bed and breakfast?
It is a bed and breakfast.
And the homeowner's supposed to, the owner's supposed to live in there?
They do have a, uh, actually, there is a residence out there.
So, so plus five. Yeah, I've seen-
Well, really, I'm not sure, but, um, the residence is a separate building, that's where they're, they're staying, yeah. So, the main, in itself, I think, you know, if you, if you're converting a single building, couldn't you do six?
But you can't have more than, than six on a property.
Is that?
Six on-
Well, that's five or six, I, I, what we're doing, I mean, eight.
We might as well just get it right though. I agree, it doesn't matter, but if we get- I agree, it doesn't matter, but if we get too far astray, right.
No more than six units shall be permitted in any building.
In any building?
Yeah.
So they could get plus six. Okay. By conversion?
Yeah.
Right?
Conversion.
Yep.
Okay, two oh one nine. Getting to the end.
That's the Sandy Manards Law, did one, that he built a new house, the Wes lived there for a long time.
Oh, here it is.
And now there's, maybe a little bit, but it's a pretty large lot.
Well, there's not a whole other subject.
What's the septic?
I guess there must be wet.
Nine, ten?
Which will, I, I'm not sure for me with it.
So down from Bray's on, uh, Dorchester, on, you know, Dorchester.
Two eight.
Four one nine. It's a, it's a, they've got a nice front porch, they're planting in the front.
Yeah. I just wanted to look at the town road map for Britton Lane.
And?
Okay, it's town road.
Yeah, well, it's not a historic town road, it might have been created as a town road because Kevin and Beck live out there, I'm not, but I don't, I don't know how they get their lot out there, cause Ellen Britton created it. So anyway, this one might be wet in the back.
Two oh one nine?
Yeah. Kind of swamped back in there, and then hopefully it's what's draining through some of its lot.
Yeah. So what do you wanna say?
Uh, the house is definitely gonna be converted, they've got a first basement and plenty of room for kids there, so it would definitely plus one in conversion.
Okay. Alright, are we done with that? Okay, uh, two oh one eleven.
One Markville Street.
Is that the blue, is that the red?
At the end.
Or the...
It's the end.
So there's a plus six.
Yep.
That's a plus six?
Mm-hmm.
By conver- by conversion.
I assume that they would be able to fit six well, and is there that septic, or no?
Septic would be, they...
They're really challenged.
They're really challenged with septic.
Yeah.
What would you, what would you say as a conservative that's...
Well, I, I'm not sure six isn't a bad number because, um, you know, one of their issues is they have to cover a lot of that lot of parking. If you were converting it to residential, you would be able to, um, get rid of a lot of that parking area. Convert that to septic, although there may be septic under that.
They've got, I think it was around there, the septic.
Yeah, on the backside is all wet metal.
Yeah.
So is six reasonable?
I don't know, but what they can take us, you know, for something, I think they pumped it in a lot.
And I think, um, one of their other issues, um, is water, that they don't have as much water as they would like.
You wanna say three?
They're not allowed to count.
I don't believe they are.
You wanna say three? Is three reasonable?
Four.
Four?
I don't know, four.
Okay. Plus four by conversion. Septic issues. Okay, we're, we're coming to the end. Four oh eight two. Four oh eight two?
Yeah, that one's, um, north of town to the, um...
So is that Sandy Kelsey's?
Yes, that's Sandy Kelsey's.
Yeah, so his house is definitely, it's got a big barn.
Yeah, well, the barn, um, doesn't have septic in it, so that would be, uh, you know, convert that to a single one.
Okay.
So that's the one?
The one, the house, I think, is big enough for a double.
Yeah.
For, for another one?
Yeah, so I think plus two by the, by conversion. Yep, and then there's another barn, um...
Like the gra- the garage down?
Yeah. Um, so...
That's open, huh?
Right, but, but that still, if it's a structure, you could convert that to...
It's not a building, though.
Does that have electricity in the septic?
Well, it is a building, um, just because it's open, it doesn't, you know, it has no power, it's taking up...
Uh, so you have to wait for...
Space.
You have to wait five years?
To convert it to more than one, but to convert it to a...
Yeah.
Okay, so what do we got, what do we... We end up with three by conversion?
The only, um...
So they need to subdivide that?
Yeah, they would probably have to do some subdividing, um, that's the only, that's what I'm trying to think how the...
They have frontage?
Seven oh one frontage. So are people comfortable with three or two?
Part of the frontage is what the pond is, and so the, the house would have to smother that, I don't know that they've got enough to...
I think they could, um, catch the house and the two barns as separate lots. Although you may not be, I don't know.
You know, if we're not sure, let's go with the lesser, let's go with the two.
I'd go with two.
Two by conversion. Okay, four oh three five.
Wait, is it...
Yeah. It's up to the...
And that's mostly out of the...
Right.
There's still a good chunk in there.
Yeah, it's a good chunk, um, avoid them, let me believe.
Yeah.
Um, can you see on that if there's anything about a conservation easement on that?
Description, RMR six.
Is the assessment and the appraisal the same?
Well, the only...
Well, that would just be current use.
That would be current use.
It might be, most of those data is just the, um, there's no house.
No, there's no house on it, no.
Forty-one acres, description's from RMR six.
You've got maybe three acres in the district. Judging by, compared to other...
Out of forty-one?
Yeah.
Would you say five or seven, five?
Or six?
So what do you think, Dave?
I think you'd, it'd be a plus two at best.
You think that's a reasonable?
If it, if there's no easement.
Right, if there's no easement on it, yeah.
It could be a little complete.
I mean, if you want, I can quickly run and check the...
Why don't we just do that instead?
Just to, no, just to the after, if, if we have...
Okay, so...
Right, yeah, that makes sense, overlook it up.
Right, plus two, um, by addition?
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh, put an asterisk, uh, conservation district.
Conservation?
Uh, yeah, no, district. Okay, uh, four oh eight twenty-five.
Is that UDS?
Yeah, that's UDS.
There's a lot of there.
There are.
Plus six?
Is that, what's the status of that, that's owned by the state or run by the state?
Essential substance.
Yeah, it's a, it's a private...
But it's a state mandated, did the state put it into the line?
No, the state, I believe, um, mandated that my group would say no.
Okay.
They want, no, they wanted to go in and there was some argument in the state.
Said you're gonna do it.
That's why we've got zoning laws.
I mean, I think for now... Yeah, that is why. It's not, it's not a zero.
Alright, let's just go, let's go zero with that for now.
Right.
Why is zero, why, why's it gonna go away, I mean, I just...
Yeah, it's not realistic for the time being.
Right.
It's, it's not gonna go away.
Yeah, I don't think it is gonna change.
Yeah. Four oh eight thirty.
Four, that's Paul, um, Mayo's Lot, um...
Okay, so...
Tiny piece in the district.
Yeah, I'm gonna say zero on that one.
There's nothing in the district.
Yeah.
Okay, we're done. Congratulations, everybody. Alright. Tally up it. So really what we wanna do is tally up, uh, the numbers and, um, come up with a summary of the process, if, if a general summary of the process. And then we wanna take this and think about it in terms of, uh, planning. And it's ti- that time of the year where it's, it's now or never to, uh, start on zoning amendments. So everybody, uh, is surprised of that fact, and if they would like to, um, come up with something, they should.
So is it, is it fair to say, though, if you're the tally, and I, I haven't done, I haven't done a month, but it seems like it's relatively speaking, a bigger number than...
It's way more than I thought.
Right.
I wonder how it compares to the Upper Valley's number, it's, you know, just...
The Upper Valley's number?
Upper Valley's, I'm here, it's not a question, but their build-out number, it's just...
Well, they're, they had a really high number, didn't they?
Right, they had a very small...
Yeah, theirs was, their standards were not...
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they counted the gravel pit in that, so, yeah, but... I, I, I am surprised at how many additional units.
Right.
Well, you know, I, when we first talked about it, we came up with a pretty low number, but when you think about what's available by conversion, when, and a, a big chunk of these, percentage-wise, are by conversion, that really...
We need to make sure those numbers are separated, so we can see what could be dealt by subdivision by conversion.
Right.
You know, just on a relative...
I think most of them are, probably majority are by conversion.
Ninety percent are, I mean, to, just to know, ninety-five percent of the growth in the number of units in, in the common area would be by conversion is a interesting fact for, you know, what we observed and...
You end up with small units, a lot, a lot of cases, pretty small, you know, four of us weren't being...
Unless you did the N for, for rolls, then none of that, that house.
So, I mean, that, that was my thinking when...
I came up with the senior housing thing.
But, but here's, here's the question, is, are there any of these lots that we said, oh yeah, you can do this with plenty of septic, that had additional septic capability, that you would actually want to give a density bonus to, to be able to use that additional septic?
I don't know.
I don't know either, maybe we can go through, but I think that that's...
Alright, well, let's, let's, let's start.
Well, I think it would be something, um, you know, you have two sides of that, one is, is it just part of the, the process that you're going through here to say, okay, this lot is, seems to have a greater amount of septic capability, let's bump up that density a little bit, or is it something that you wanna propose in the ordinance? Because, you know, if you're gonna propose it in the ordinance, then you need to know for a fact that it can be, um, increased.
We need, we need more to kind of...
Well, that's why, why we're doing this thing.
Well, let's...
We don't wanna make a change and then have nobody be able to do it.
Right, well, it's, you know, if you're, so yeah, this, these lots could support more, and then you have a, you know, like Rusty's lot seemed fairly good when you...
Yeah.
But when you actually look at the soil.
How, how certain are we gonna, can we be?
And from my numbers, I, I'm not going to, um, stand by those numbers for, uh, change in the ordinance. It might, it was just an exercise, you know, based on numbers I was able to get from, from data, not anything that was done through test bits.
But even if, if we as a board wanted to look into this more deeply, we, we, we really can't, we're, we're not gonna be able to...
Without test bits.
Yeah, we, we can't.
Actually having somebody, having soil tested, unless it, the regulation change, um, includes that, you know, if, if your septic, if you can support a larger septic on your lot, and leave it up to the owner to show that they can support that, then the board can approve additional density.
Density.
It's not something that could be written, I think, written in the ordinance that you automatically get the higher density.
Under, under these conditions.
Right, you would have to, if your lot can support it.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That makes sense. Cause I, I just don't think there's a practical way for us to establish that.
No, I don't think there is.
Without us, all the chipping and rilling, maybe test bits.
I got fifteen hundred bucks you can spend, that's all you can spend this year.
Hell, do a couple.
Alright, so, um, I'll be happy to, uh, add up my numbers, and I'll be good for at least one other person to...
Oh, I'll, I'll do it in this spreadsheet also.
Okay, so you'll do it and I'll do it.
And we'll just double check our numbers.
Double check our numbers. If it's a question mark and we didn't pick a number, two oh one, what page is that?
Seven. That was the first one, maybe I just wasn't...
Page seven, I have a question mark. And I have a question mark on two oh one one twenty-seven, along.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh...
Fifty-five and one by seven, so...
We were just getting started, so we probably didn't know what we were...
We weren't as good as we are now.
Alright, let's go back and revisit those.
Okay, fifty-five is on, uh, Unit Three.
Yeah, we were, I looked at that and it was a question of which lot it was, um...
Now Kevin has the computer, so you can read that.
Sorry, I thought we're done, I closed it, I'm going.
It's like there's the school and then fathers, is that Nancy Grant?
Sorry, I think it's Nancy Grant.
Two oh one fifty-five.
She already has a big one there, she's, she's got rentals in it.
She's got a rental, one rental and the next one.
But she already has two. Yeah, now this is...
Yeah, it shows a three for occupancy.
Three?
Three, okay, she should not have any more.
No.
Yeah.
You're not kidding. Okay, so that's an X. And two oh one one twenty-seven.
Good, see, I heard.
Nineteen High Street. The old house-ish, thirteen Hertz Murphy.
I think the, it's probably one of those that the, um, when the labels got placed, it didn't, they have a place to put it. So I, I think what you're looking at is, where you see two oh one one twenty-six?
Yeah.
I think it's in front of that, cause I think one twenty-six, the lot hooks in to the south, so like a hockey stick can go south.
Yeah, you can barely see some lines on the...
Yeah, so I think it's the front one, uh, has a house on it right now that sits fairly close to the road.
And they don't, their lot coverage is fourteen ninety-five, so they couldn't get fifteen hundred, would be two units. So, they, they don't make it. So it's...
But, well, um...
It's the house across from the highway garage. Yes, we're done.
Just south of the highway garage.
We're done, what's it named, it's, yeah, it has the, most of the frame building, the business in it, exactly.
So...
No, I don't know, you're, you're right.
But if it's fourteen ninety-five...
But I think you could, if you look at the, the house, um, you could split that into two.
Little or thirteen Hertz Murphy.
And, um...
Expand and split?
I think, yeah, there's, you could get plus one on that.
One by conversion?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, plus one by conversion. Alright, um, so, uh, David Robbins and, and I will... Add this up for the next meeting and, um, and then we should also come up with a summary of, of the process. Okay, and people who are interested in either senior housing or something else should get to work. And, uh, congratulations, everybody finally finishing that.
I think that was a good exercise, though, I, I think you guys did good work.
You guys? Who, what? You just played...
It's just playing on computers. That's the East Coast term for everyone, these guys.
Including these guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we learned a lot about the lot.
These guys. These guys.
Well, for me, listening in, as having just gone through the LCDC stuff and people talking about, you know, how much more housing you could have, how other things, it, I think adds a little bit of richness to that discussion and exercise, because now people can, once we do have the overall number, we can say, well...
That's a lot of hot building.
There's a certain amount of latent development just sitting there that...
Well, that's really what that was...
Is subject to market conditions, and if all of a sudden people decided, wow, and everybody starts converting left and right, then you could end up with a very different town.
Yeah.
Now, unfortunately, people probably aren't going to subdivide every big farmhouse into four rental units, but...
Certainly not in the first...
There are, there are other towns out there where that has happened.
Well, the idea is not to have it to be four rental units, that the family lives there, plus three, I mean, because I agree that absentee ownership is not a positive.
Right, right. But still, I mean, what I meant was, four units that could either be condos or rental units or duplexes or whatever, I mean, that really does tell you more about what this little village could be like ten, fifteen years from now.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure. So what I was also hoping to do tonight is get this hazard mitigation thing taken care of, so that doesn't get kicked endlessly down the road. So are people willing to do that?
Yeah. Same with that, because I was, I was that...
David, well, here it is. Hi, David, this is from Margaret Kaudell Schlossberg, who's our person, right?
Emergency Management Director.
Hi, David, I'm attaching the hazard mitigation plan items that we, the town of Lima, agreed to address, continue or fix. The planning board and on item zero through eight, the zoning board as well, are listed as the responsible party for seeing that these items are addressed. This is part of the annual concurrence process and will serve, for the most part, as getting the two boards aware of such items to see if there has been any activity in the past year or in the future that might be addressing these items. And our items are then laid out, zero eight, zero nine, zero thirteen, zero sixteen, one three, one four, two. We added a hazard, for those of you who are, or we, upon the request of, was it FEMA?
It was FEMA.
FEMA mandated that we have a hazard mitigation chapter for master plan, and now these are potential changes or alterations. So, well, you have yours. You have it.
Do you want me to, Joe, maybe?
I guess we've got it.
Yes, I got it.
I don't have it, I don't think I've ever had it.
Well, we, yeah, we didn't watch it, but we thought it would just be a set.
So in New Year's, that would be, that would be hazardous for that.
Excuse me, I might mention before, because you look, you look a little familiar, but what I hear coming out of your mouth is...
Oh, but I mean, that would be practical for a New Year's attack.
You look like somebody I used to know.
We can write that in there.
We practice that.
You just bend it, put your head...
Well, that was tuck and cover.
Sure.
Tuck and cover. That's why we have this table.
That was the same answer for everything.
Yeah. That's an all-purpose...
Well, we're done then, what is we?
Yeah.
Send it back to...
Yeah, send it back to the, yes, of course, yes, naturally, all right. So...
So just full disclosure, I am the deputy, so...
Well, that's, that's...
No, 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 jokes.
So did you guys look at what would happen if the dam?
More dam?
No, the dam that, I'll make this long. No, I guess that's a, yeah, comes along, that effect line, would that just wash through?
Where's Cummins?
That's the second one. Reservoir's the first and...
I know about the more dam.
The more dam is...
No, I was just wondering, would any of Lima's roads get washed out?
From Cummins?
Yeah.
I don't even know Cummins.
I don't know that there's a dam there.
Yeah, that's true.
And Reservoir doesn't, I think Cummins definitely does, because you see it on your way of the plains.
Well, I think if it doesn't have a dam, it's not a problem.
Yeah, but the second one does, and through any of Lima's roads, or is that called Lancaster?
Which second one do you mean by that?
There is a, there is a, there is a dam on Reservoir, yeah.
It's interesting, Kevin, because years ago, I remember, one of the many meetings, which probably members were talking about the dam up north in Connecticut, the more, the more dam, and the Army Corps of Engineers had figured this all out, and they said that if that dam broke, we had four hours...
Which one is this, the more?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We had four hours and twenty-four minutes, or something like that, before the water would hit...
Like a tsunami?
Here, and it would be really high, I mean, it would be up probably our house, our house would be, I mean, it would be way above a hundred year foot, but it was four hours and twenty-seven minutes they had it all figured out, I don't know what it would take to get there here.
And where's this dam?
Up north.
You see it on ninety-one?
Oh, it's up like, far north?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's somewhere up there, and it's, it's got, I forget the material, but the material is, you know, it's just terrible, and it had cracks and breaches and...
The Army Corps of Engineers tweeted that if it just broke, like, all of a sudden, that wall, that water would just come in.
It would cut like a tsunami right down, right down the valley.
So you'd have four hours and twenty minutes to get all your stuff, I think, and also all your vehicles away and, you know, anyway.
Forces on high ground.
I wonder if right here we could...
We're pretty high up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
I assume it would come up, break some ways, you'd go wash out some bridges.
I think you'd be okay.
Oh, yeah, all the bridges.
We'd be all right.
We're forty feet out.
Yeah.
We're sixty. I don't know, if you're figuring out exactly how much.
We're sixty, about fifty-five, sixty feet.
You guys won't...
Yeah, they said it was going to come up, same way we're in.
Temporary work. It would be waterfront for about, about twelve hours.
Right, we'd just boat about.
You'd be watching all the houses float by.
It would be like a scene from The Wizard of Oz at the beginning, we just wave to all the neighbors.
Well, you know, when September, I guess it was Irene Keith, who was over in Creche, and, you know, Creche playing fields there, there were just loads of propane tanks, big.
Well, so propane tanks.
I remember seeing a picture of a car, that red car that was right by Seven Piers. There's a whole car that went right down through there, they had it on the news, I think.
Yeah, propane tanks are notorious for disappearing floods.
And hopefully they're creating quite a risk. Hopefully these rackets just sit around in the yard.
Hope is the thing with feathers.
It is.
Okay, so I'll run you through, if you go to the third page, which I know including the cover, cover page, that's the first thing that's listed, flood regulations as an action item for the planning board, so zero eight.
On this point, it's going to be second page.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's on that cover page.
Okay, so second page, zero eight. So, action item eight, and my question was, do we already do this?
I don't have the, I'm not sure the brochure that they are referring to, I basically am the floodplain manager for the town, and as part of any review for any building, I do look at floodplain issues and ensure that the houses meet the, if they're, they are, if it's new building or if it's, you know, rebuilding, I do impose the floodplain regulations so that the property owners become aware just through the fact that they are asking for a permit in the, so I'm not sure...
Do we want to have these brochures?
I don't, do they even make them still? So much is online now, I wonder...
Again, I'm not sure that the...
Brochures are coming up, you actually...
Yeah, I'm not...
If your mortgage company tells you you need it, if you need it, then...
And...
They have stuff online.
I mean, I don't think it's the planning board's job to get those out, if they're available, get, order some, put them in the town offices, and that's that.
Yeah, I don't, I certainly don't believe it's some of the planning boards.
Well, this, she's saying it's, she wants us to address...
It is in our subdivision regulations and it's in the site plan, so we've already trusted by through regulations. It's something that we ask people to give to us, you know, on the checklist, there's probably there are three times in every checklist.
All right, so we'll say it's addressed in subdivision...
Yeah, I'm not even sure what the actual...
And the, and the, and the planning and zoning administrator also.
I mean, if somebody's moving to town, either buying a house or renting a house or building a house, is there someplace where they can easily look up to see whether or not they are at a flood risk and then would say, oh, boy, I better go get that brochure to find out what I need to do, like anchor my propane tanks and whatnot?
Well, the, if you buy a house, no, there's no, other than the...
There's an online, you know, web map or...
There is an online web map, and you certainly, and I do get people who ask me, and I can very easily, I have all the data in the GIS system and yada, I have the aerial photography, and I can look at the house and look at where the line is and say yes or no.
If they want to know, it's easy to find that.
There are mortgage companies that require that information.
And there's actually, the mortgage companies are somewhat more aggressive, and a lot of times they say they're in when they're not.
It's usually in the flood, it's usually in your checklist when you're, when the Realtor is giving you the disclosures, it's in there. But not for rental necessarily.
Yeah, so the action item says through public, I print to town's website, educate homeowners regarding this, so David, it seems like one of the things we could be needing that would be to put a link or a floodplain...
Well, there is, it's on flood insurance on the website, yeah.
So that, that answers, you know, half of that action item.
Again, when I approach these things, sometimes I understand, you know, are you absolutely required to do this? No, okay, well, whatever, but then you have to say, what's the spirit of?
Right.
And the spirit of it is that you want people to not move here and have everything in their yard wash away, because they didn't know where to floodplain, then sometimes all you need to do is put a link on the website so that when they go, it's that much easier for them to find, oh, wow, I just rented a house at a floodplain. So that's what I like to respond to both.
And you need to actively work with residents to ensure they are compliant with town floodplain ordinance.
So that's, but that's a good solution.
Right. And that answers, that's the action item, that's a...
All right, so the action item is going to be add to town?
And if you look at, read through, where's the, twenty-two, and it provides appropriate links to the NFIB and readyto.gov on the Emergency Management Services webpage, so I can...
You can add a link.
So that meets the spirit.
Okay, and the next one is building on floodplains, which is zero nine, and do we want to add language?
Yeah, well, if you look at the, at the very bottom, I think she's addressed that, you know, town regulations and planning and zoning prevent residents and developers from building on floodplains or in areas that are at risk for floods.
So we're okay with it?
Yeah, I think that was...
Or maybe can't build.
Okay. All right, next one is zero thirteen, water resources for new structures, and planning board requirements for new residences, problem statement, there continues to be availability issues regarding water resources for the town, although mechanisms are in place to work with the planning board and fire department to ensure water resources in newer or expanded developments. Action item thirteen, continue to address water availability and resource issues in an effort to maintain the public water supply and to address fire suppression capabilities, refer to the rural fire water resource, resource plan. Consider ways to add water resources to Lima, the most concerned, the Lima central, the most concerning area in the community.
The only place that the planning board could act in this is when there's a subdivision to ask, you know, in the regulations of fire pond.
Do you do that?
You already do that, the rest is going to be up to the fire department to work with landowners to try to find places that they can put fire ponds.
So what's wrong with using Grant Brook for a fire? Could it just drop down there?
I don't know where they're getting to do it. I don't know if there is anything, you know, dropping a hose over the side of the bridge is really not an easy thing to do, sounds it, but the hoses you're using to draft from are hard section hoses, they're not, they don't flex a lot, so trying to get one to go over and down into the brook is not real easy.
So maybe just the action item, continue to address fire availability, so couldn't we say that planning board for any future development will be...
Well, future subdivisions, we already require fire protection.
Exactly.
So we continue to require fire protection.
And then the other thing would be just get with Chief Monday and just have the, all the different fire ponds with hydrants listed, boom, 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 boom.
Yep, if you go on, I did a map form. I did a map form.
And so just, I think that would answer that.
So as we're going through these, who are we giving these answers to?
They're going to have to go back to Margaret.
Margaret.
So incorporate them in.
All right, so you'll get, you're getting this in the math?
I'm not getting it as well as I'd like that.
Okay, so...
So for that one, basically, it's, the planning board already requires that any new development, that water resources are available, and then secondarily, that the town has X number of established fire hydrants. There's about twenty ponds in town that have hydrants.
Are there any along the river road and connect to the river?
No, there's nothing that goes into the river.
That's idle.
The river is an admissible waterway and therefore has more restrictions on it from the Army Corps of Engineers, so you can't just stick a pipe up into the water.
Doesn't make sense.
I'm just, no, I was just curious, because I don't, I don't know where the nearest, for where I live, where the nearest hydrant or pond would be, I mean, they could, they could literally, the bridge at Grant Brook between you and me, they could drop a pipe there pretty easily, I mean, easier than you or where we are, it's ten feet deep.
Ten feet deep, but I'm not sure, you also run into an issue of height.
Yeah.
A perfect vacuum, I'd be trapped in water, so, side conversation.
Let's not go through that.
And talk about it on the way home.
Right. Physics.
Yes.
So...
I used to be a firefighter.
So David, did you get the...
So I'm working on the, the already requires new developments have resource, have water resources, the town has, and I don't know the number yet.
So that would be new subdivisions.
Right.
Not new development, because, you know, people put their homes, so that first sentence that she has, in planning board requirements for new residences, we don't have any requirements for new residences, so that's a, like, cross that out, because we don't deal with new residences, that's a zoning thing, and...
And that should really, I guess...
That, that needs to go away, and so it, make sure that it's on...
Well, hold on, hold on, but, but we could address it through zoning, I suppose. You know, saying it's a zoning issue, we could...
Well, I'm not sure...
It's a building code thing, requires...
Is it a building code or a zoning?
Well, we're not going to require a pond.
Right, well, that's the thing, you can't...
Or you have a sprinkler system, where everybody has that in its system.
You cannot require a sprinkler system.
Exactly, well, that's the other option.
So there's really nothing practical... So we, there's really nothing practical. All right, so we're saying it's addressed through...
For, I'd say it's addressed through new subdivisions, but, and almost, it might even say that we have, the planning board has no authority to enforce.
Right.
For residents.
For, you know, single-family residences. You can for multi-family. Well, maybe up to them what they want to do, but in some cases, required.
And did you get for eight and for nine? For eight?
For eight, I just had to add links on the website.
Yeah, and it's also addressed in the subdivision, site plan review and through the planning and zoning administrator. And in nine, she already gave the answer.
Okay, well, that's, planning and zoning regulations prevent residences, not town regulations.
Where are you, what are you...
I'm just looking at what she typed in here.
For where, for which one?
Let me say, these are probably coming from the hazard mitigation plan, so this is what the consultant put.
Well, they don't speak English, so...
I know, I, I can't...
Planning and zoning regulations prevent residents...
This is, what I'm saying is those things have already been submitted to FEMA and it's not something that we're going to be able to have them just change.
We just need to address them.
Right.
So...
And if it's addressing saying that the, it's wording incorrectly, that's okay, but that's, you know, this is what FEMA has accepted as the...
But this is her language. Whose language is this underneath the problem statement, the action item?
That would be, I think that is what was written up in the, when the plan was submitted to FEMA.
Was that written by somebody at FEMA or by...
No, there was a consultant that was hired to do this.
And that's who wrote that?
That's who, I assume.
Town regulations and planning and zoning prevent residents, developers from building in floodplains. Well, whoever wrote that essentially addressed the issue, right?
Yep. And I think that, I think it doesn't, it's, there's no, nothing needs to be changed to that.
Yeah, so I would just say in the minutes, I would quote what they wrote.
Yep.
Well, it says, town regulations and planning zoning prevent residents...
Doesn't make sense. Sorry, I don't know what that is.
So what would make sense?
Planning and zoning regulations present, prevent residents...
Okay, so just write that, planning and zoning regulations. And we're moving on to 16.
We need to do 14.
14 is not an action item for us. 16, deforestation in some areas of Lime, problem statement, deforestation in some parts of Lime has a potential to cause erosion. Action item, continue to encourage best practices and adherence to state regulations to prevent the erosion that results from timber cutting. Well, whenever they say continue, what is up for us to do?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything, and you guys don't really write much.
No, but...
Well, the select board does. The select board does, and there is a section in the zoning that talks about timber harvesting, so...
I would just say we will continue.
Or reference the section.
Yeah, and you can reference the sec, right, reference the sec, David, the section that you were talking about.
You know, timber cut permits, you know, that. You guys don't go out and look at best management practices or anything. That just means that you're on the hook to give us money for that.
No, well, also, basically, the person that's on the hook is the forester that signs the document saying, I'm gonna follow the practices established by Hampshire.
And I mean, you know, timber harvesting operates, including the construction and maintenance, logging road shall be conducted in accordance with best management practices, so it prevents soil erosion damage to the surface.
Just reference that and say, and we will continue.
Yep.
All right, so that's 16. And then we're down into 13, the next one. A problem statement, the Lime master plan, what?
What do we do functionally?
Because it's not on our list on the cover one. It's all 8, 09, 013, 016, 13, 14, and 22. The Lime master plan will, will be need of an update based on the recommended tenure guidelines in 23. However, it does not include a natural hazards section or mitigation action items from this plan. Review the Lime master plan and consider the incorporation of that nat, natural hazards section. So what is the distinction between the hazard mitigation and natural hazard mitigation?
Natural hazards are going to be considered things such as wildfires, floods, hurricanes.
Volcanoes.
Ice storms. Well, I'm trying to, volcanoes are pretty low on the list if you ask me, but that's...
You, you, do you forget the, do you forget the Lime volcano of 16A?
Well, isn't the Connecticut River a fault?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, so...
I think, I was reading a paper that said that the alligator across from, across from, pardon, is in fact a long day volcano.
Okay, so, so let's add a volcano chapter for the master plan. So, so do we want to have a natural hazard mitigation subsection of the hazard mitigation chapter? Can I add this?
Is there a ha, natural hazards section in the management, the emergency management plan that we can just reference?
Right.
Because presumably they've all been identified.
Sorry, probably.
Okay, so, so...
So, yes, we will review the master plan and consider incorporation of natural hazards section.
And, and we're picking it up from where?
Just from the hazard mitigation plan. They've got a plan and they're already acting on it.
I mean, one of the big things that they, they pushed in doing the hazard mitigation plan is the, the buffer between residential properties and the wild areas. They're trying to, they have a specific name for that area. It's usually the first 300 feet. And so there is, I think, areas where you could, in the master plan, talk about the importance of maintaining the, the buffer between your, your property and...
What do you mean by maintaining the buffer?
And then again, this...
Is that mowing or...
Out of California, this is a huge thing. Because how close you are to combustible stuff and how, you know, whatever you can do to keep your house from...
And not just California, any of the, you know, any of the big states that are, basically from Colorado West, you'll find them pushing to have you clear out any combustibles between you and the forest. And there's a certain distance that they would like. The big thing, you get out west, is it's different than here. But when, when you have a huge wildfire coming through, they want to have a, basically a defensible space. And if they feel if they have a certain area that there's no combustibles, as that fire is moving through, they can bring in men and equipment, protect your house. Once it's gone past, they move to the next one. And there's space that they can defend that is not easily burned. And I think that's...
I don't think that we would be requiring that or...
Well, no, I don't think that the, the...
But they're just asking us to...
To consider, yeah.
To review the...
We could add language.
With climate change, if you ended up with, you know, an extended drought, we could be at huge risk for very damaging forest fires because people are so used to it being wet that they aren't used to it being dry and they don't even think about it, like me. But, you know, that's still a, whatever it is, a one in a thousand.
But still, you know, again, you're not gonna spend a lot of time and money worrying about that if it might happen.
On a practical level, all we're doing here is, we're, we can say we're maintaining, come up with language to say that we want to maintain buffers.
I don't think we do.
No, I would say the board is going to review it and then, because I think that would be a better...
The board will review language, or review the buffers?
Or, when you say, but, that's just, I was giving you an example.
What are we reviewing?
The natural hazards in the hazard mitigation plan, and see if I can incorporate a natural hazards section.
Okay, and, but now, at one point we were saying we would pick that up from the natural hazard plan?
From the hazard mitigation plan?
Yes, the, I believe there is a natural hazards section of the hazard mitigation plan.
So who has that?
I have it.
Okay, so will you, will you give us that?
He can recite that. He's gonna do it dramatically.
Okay, so you'll get us that?
Sure.
Okay, send that to, you can just send it to David.
Why don't you just send it, the link to it, and we can read about it online.
I'm not even sure, it might even be on the, the website already for the, under that banner. It's great for your...
All right, so you'll get that to either David or all of us? Yeah, okay, so 14, no building inspector, problem statement, the town of Lime does not have a building inspector. However, the permitting process requires builders to abide by the international building codes and the international residential codes, which have been adopted by the state of New Hampshire. There is not an official program to inspect commercial rental or other publicly used buildings. Action item 22, develop an official program to inspect commercial rental and other publicly used buildings provided outreach unprogrammed.
That's...
Thoughts?
Friendly to the...
I would say absolutely not, as a, as a fire builder.
But, but we have to address this.
Actually, I think it's a really good idea because guess what? When I told borrowers to, like, do things to code and I got inspected, they didn't do things to code, and I was pretty PO'd. So I, I, they take shortcuts all over the place and it really is, you know, buyer, homeowner, if you're homeowner, beware because most of the people out there doing work in our town don't know what the codes are.
So what do we want to do?
I think that's a good recommendation. I think it should include, it should include residences, so little old ladies don't get taken advantage of.
What about, what about little old men?
That, well, I was speaking for myself and I don't know how the men feel because they may feel they know the codes, but...
That's the problem.
Well, no, not when you pay like a huge amount of money.
All right, so we want, so we want to consider this? Or we, what...
It's not us, it's really the, the town.
The, you know, the select board would be, because the select board is going to have to fund this.
Yep.
Are we looking at 1-4?
Yes, yes.
It's talking about publicly used buildings, so this isn't little old language.
I understand, but I'm saying it should be expanded, including single-family residences in many towns too.
Yeah, you'd have a huge pushback.
So, yeah.
And people, you'd have people to pitch for it, so.
Yeah, it looks like normal.
We, if I were you guys, I'd keep this one over the fence to the select board.
Okay.
This was debated in the, when I was in the main legislature, this was debated all the time, was whether or not contractors needed to be certified and there was some way to make sure that they knew the code and that there was some way to follow, that to make sure they followed the code. And some of the contractors are always in favor of it because they're good and they do follow it. And others are like, you know, they want to be able to be fly by night. I lost my job, I want to be a contractor for three years and then I'm not a contractor anymore. And they don't, it gets fought over every year and really is in the past.
Well, I'm not even talking about that. It's lessons to electricians not doing things to code.
Okay, on a practical level, that's totally separate.
So we're moving this to the select board?
Yes.
Yeah, because it's got to do with our, the buildings that we all own.
Okay, so 32, capital improvement plan to include hazard mitigation strategy. Okay, and now we're back to the capital, yeah, just to the history, well, I'll read it. Although Lime has a current capital improvement plan, work needs to be done on the, on the plan. Establish committee to produce more comprehensive plan, blah, blah, blah. So what, the history of the capital improvement plan was in 2007 or '08, we did one. And then we were gonna do another, and when Jay was on the select board, at first he said, we don't need you guys to do it. And then he decided that we should do it, and then you, you were gonna work with him.
I was gonna help him.
And then he got ill, and so that's where it was left. So it's, it's really at the pleasure of the select, I mean, we, we can't do it, but I'd like it to be at the pleasure of the select board. Do you want planning board information on CIP?
Somebody does it anyway, don't they? I mean, isn't there CIP somewhere?
I have no idea. Well, the culvert inventory, for example, because I asked that question at town meeting, was what's it for? And part of the reason is for things like Irene and natural disasters, you're trying to know what's gonna, what's gonna blow out, how bad is it gonna be, whatever. Plus, it's also looking at things like impact on fisheries and stuff like that. So, you see, it sounds like the town's already got, is already somewhat mindful of some hazards, but not necessarily all of them.
But I think David, the other, the other part of the CIP is just figuring out when we're gonna need to buy certain vehicles and how much they're gonna cost.
Let me make the distinction that you're, this is asking us about what you're talking about, which is the hazard mitigation. So that's one thing, but more generally, I'm also asking, what is, what does the town want in terms of planning board participation in the CIP? At one point, we were basically told that we would be wasting our time. So if you can ask the board, the select board, what they want and tell us.
Because it's kind of figuring out how much money we have to split away every year to buy the fire truck that we're gonna use.
I understand that piece. I'm, I'm talking about, when they're talking about this, what they're talking about here is, is do you have culverts that will blow out in the storm so that people will be stranded?
Right.
And, and you won't be able to even get to them for emergency purposes.
So when, what...
And so therefore you should add that to your budget to say, those 10 culverts need to be reflected. That's what they're worried about.
Their action item says establish a committee to, to produce a more comprehensive plan for the future and to consider mitigation strategies. I mean...
Well, on the culvert side, actually, we've got a very, very good survey recently done.
But that's just one of the 25 different things we don't even know about.
Do we want to establish, do we want to establish a committee? Or, or is there some existing entity?
I, I don't see how this falls into the planning board realm, actually.
Well, other than it is a...
It's only because it's a capital...
Capital reserve or a capital...
Capital improvement, and, and we, we have the option of performing it in the CIP.
If the planning board looks at the culverts and looked at that inventory and said, boy, this really is lacking, it needs to be improved, then that could be part of the capital improvement plan to, you know, start upgrading the culverts in a very, you know...
So I'd ask the select board to give us guidance on this. Whether they want us to go down this road or not.
I'll talk to Margaret and see what she's got in mind.
Okay.
And I messed up, I had put two of the same together when I photographed it, so you're gonna, there's two.
Two, I think we're done.
Yeah, then you're done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know some cities, for example, have done, based on hazard issues, when you come in for maybe a major subdivision, they basically try to get the developer to do stuff like replace culverts and traffic lights and stuff, anywhere, anywhere they can possibly, you know, pawn the cost off and say, as a condition of your, of your new thing, yeah, you're gonna have to do this because your development will get cut off in a flood or whatever. So I think they're just trying to get us to raise our thinking about natural hazards and how they affect decision making in the town. That's really, I think, all they're looking at here.
Right. All right, so we, we got through that, and that'll go in the minutes, and then we can use that to actually do what we said we would do. And does anybody have anything else for tonight?
I'd like to thank Mickey for sending that.
Yeah, yeah, that was interesting.
About the council, make concern, man. That was good.
What's that?
We should frame that.
You do have something?
I do have one final. This is not for any discussion tonight. It is for informational use only.
Okay.
So just please take one. Pinnacle is still unhappy with the, and they have filed suit. This is a copy of the suit.
Okay, so you already have this, I assume?
I do.
You don't want another one for your...
Sure, I'll take that. I mean, David's already made, done.
Okay, so we are not to discuss this?
There's not, I'm just giving you information tonight.
Okay.
We are going to meet with Pinnacle and their attorneys on the 22nd, so it's the second meeting next month.
Okay.
To...
Who's with me?
The planning board. And, and town council.
Okay.
I'm going to ask the planning board to be here at 6:30.
Okay.
To discuss, and Rich, I'm going to have to ask you not to be here at 6:30, to discuss...
What needs to be discussed?
What needs to be discussed with town... What needs to be discussed with town council ahead of time.
Okay, and what is the meeting, what is the meeting officially, is it a discussion or is it?
Uh, it is my understanding that it's going to be Pinnacle asking the planning board to change the wording of the decision, try to avoid the, the suit.
And, um, under, under what? Should I not ask these questions now?
No, you, there is, um, there is no statutory authority for the planning board to go back and redo a decision. But it is generally understood that judges prefer that the boards try to do so.
Even though.
And so this is under the recommendation of town council, that you.
We, we have a discussion.
At least have the discussion, yeah, and he'll go over a little bit more.
Alright, so let's leave it at that.
Um, it is going to be a warned meeting, so once the meeting starts, it will be a public meeting, I will be billing you for the, the notices and the ad for the newspaper.
Okay.
So once I get the newspaper added in, I know how much that is, I'll give you a invoice, and I'll just use the same notice list as the original.
Okay, very good, and is there anything else?
Actually, I did, as a follow-up to the note that Mickey sent me, um, Mickey, what's, what's your expectation about the press? Using, thinking about whatever these, these notices you sent up?
It's mainly to enrich your experience as a planning board member, I mean, a lot of the discussion at the LCDC was about that type of thing. And there is just this random information from out there that comes across, and just like, read it and leave or, and leave automatically, nothing, nothing.
Good, great, because I also have seen C-NC, so maybe you want all those, ask David to send them out.
And as I, I'm not going to flood building boxes with stuff, you know, the, the, in periodical, not a problem, but it is a volunteer board, and having their mailboxes flooded with information can be.
Yeah, so, so what I would say is, is, let's not get into a back and forth of, of, like, yeah, well, here's this, here's that. If there's something that's constructive and you're not taking up too much of David's time, fine, but if it starts to get burdensome on David, then, then I would suggest that restrain the show. Okay?
Great.
Um, and is every, everybody just looks so happy, you know, and I have.
I love lawsuits, sure.
And, and I have to tell you, what a happy night this has been, um, so let's close out on that happy note, this happy night, and move on to more happiness. Before nine o'clock, we're done here?
That's all I have.
Alright, let's, let's, let's move on, and, and that thing is still running?
It is.
It would be nice if it, if it would end at some point.